I'll call this meeting the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Jelka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, agenda is approved. Next we will move on to public comments. First, if there's anybody in the room, please state your name and address.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, 411 Alma Street, Waterloo, Iowa. And I'm here for the last part of our pledge of allegiance for liberty and justice for all. I've been down here since you were with basically the Bruce Bailey team. So that's been quite a while ago.
Yeah.
And I've been to several different police chiefs during that time, as well as county attorneys. What my issue is, is I have a criminal matter that is not being addressed as criminal, but Mr. Williams has told me before it's a civil matter when in fact there's over 1.2 million dollars worth of farmland that I was an heir to that was sold without me getting notice or the right to appeal the sale. So in other words, it would be the same as selling your car and your brother sells it without putting your name on it. That is criminal. It's not a civil matter. It's over the threshold for money to make it not criminal when you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in fraud. I'm trying to find out what I can do to get some assistance in this matter other than being benign neglect and straight lied to. The Constitution is set in place so that the rules are followed, and if you don't follow the rules, that's treason. You're working against the government, you're working against our Constitution. That's, that is treason. So I'm saying that we have some problems here with just liberty and justice for all in my case, and in particular, my children. So what I'm talking about right now is the civil matter in case nine, excuse me, ESPR 006 003, which out of Buchanan County, Iowa. Every check was cashed here, or should I say written here in Waterloo. The police chief in Buchanan County Independence says that you all here have equal concern with what's going on is what they do. I'm just asking that someone look into the criminal part of it, not the civil part, the fact that there's over 1.2 million dollars worth of land that was sold for less than $300,000 without the family. Twenty-nine heirs, three or two of them signed to get that done, and I think that they did it under duress, just like the case with my daughter where a person went in the restroom and threatened her mother's life. This is what we're dealing with here, and I'm asking for assistance from the county. I'm not hard to find, I wish someone would reach out to me. There's been too many years of this going on, benign neglect.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else wish to address the board on something that is not an agenda item, either in the room or on Zoom? All right, hearing none, we will move on to claims of payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $1,620,546.58. And of that, the 60-40 fund, we're paying $82.79. We had a good construction month in July, is what I will say. The large increase in expenses is primarily due to construction on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. We paid ruining rock products, $708,549.29, and another $472,366.20. And then also made a payment to Crystal Plumbing and Heating on the HVAC project at Conservation. That's $37,925. And then also a payment to Origin Design for Cedar Valley Nature Trail, and that was And that is most, whoops, guess I got one more. Iowa Department of Natural Resources for Casey Lake, that project, we made a payment of $20,915.78. Those are most of the large unusual payments, so. Any questions?
All right, any questions, Board? All right, hearing none, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Brief update on the road conditions. The bridge crew is working on Rose Lane today and possibly tomorrow. That's in Cedar Terrace where we have two roads that are concrete. We are doing some concrete panel repair on that portion of road. The bridge crew will then move over to Big Woods Road probably tomorrow or Thursday, and we will begin that six to eight week project, replacing a small bridge on that portion of Big Woods Road just south of Cedar Bopsey Road. Tama Road has now been the large culvert project, replacing all the culverts in preparation for paving next year. That has all been completed and that road is reopened. And then lastly, I just wanted to comment that Griffin, I know he gave our roadside manager, roadside biologist, gave you a report last week, but there was a nice article on the front page of the Courier with him on the front of the page, and the roadside prairies this year are just beautiful this year in everyone's right of way, so good work by all roadside managers this year.
Excellent.
Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update this morning, either in the room or on Zoom? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the minutes approved from the August 6, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, minutes are approved. Next we will move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. We will move on to contracts and agreements, item A. This is a resolution, the three-year contract with No Wait Inside LLC for a new queuing system with a cost of $22,680 for the first two years. We paid with the American Rescue Plan funding, and the third year annual cost to be $11,340, which will be budgeted for fiscal year 2027, be approved, and direct the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Linda Hinsman, County Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion or questions?
Let's see, timeline on that, as far as what timeline are you expecting?
Good morning, Board. Linda Hinsman. Timeline on that, I think they can actually have us up and going within the next two or three weeks. On their end, right now I'll get with Al through IT and we'll get some kiosk ordered and iPads ordered, so that we'll be prepared. On our end, but then we'll push forward to, like I said, within two or three weeks after that, be up and going.
And just a quick overview for the public, this will be like an online queuing system. People can check in, maybe elderly people can wait out in their cars if waiting in line is hard for them.
Yep.
And stuff, okay.
They'll actually be able to check in online if they would like to schedule an appointment. We'll have kiosks available, looking to have two available within the office. At that point, we'll just have them put in what they're there for doing business, so that our staff is a little more aware of what's coming in, and we can direct it a little bit better at that point. And yes, they can also wait in their vehicles and they'll send them a message when we're ready for them.
Excellent.
This system is also available for those throughout the county, so once we purchase the license on this, if there's another entity within the county that sees that this might be something they can use for their office as well, we'll already have that purchased, so they will be able to hop on board as well.
I think it's a good customer service feature.
Yep. It'll be really nice when the renovation's completed though, and people can
Yes.
access the office differently, but yeah.
Yep. It'll be definitely something different and new for staff and for the public, but I think once everyone gets used to the new changes, I think it'll be a great thing.
Will that be anything because of the renovation? I guess will there be any difficulty working through that when we have all the changes kind of happening to your department and then redirecting?
I don't believe so. In fact, that's kind of one reason why I'm pushing forward now, so that we can kind of get a handle on what the program is and get used to it, so we can utilize it during our renovation. Instead of just having people waiting and not sure where they're going, I'm hoping this will kind of be a direction for everyone involved.
Very good. All right, Board, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item B, this is a resolution to approve the 28E agreement between Blackhawk County and the City of Waterloo for the purpose of providing assistance to the Northeast Iowa Response Group for Al McKee, Blackhawk, Bremer, Butler, Chickasaw, Grundy, Harden, Powashie, Tama, and Winneshie Counties by supplying support, personnel, and equipment to respond in the case of hazardous substance emergency within the counties effective September 1st, 2024 through August 30th, 2034.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions?
I assume the City of Waterloo submitted this?
Yeah, this is coming from the nerd group as a whole, but, and I believe that many of the entities have already approved.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll just add that this has been a good partnership that I believe Supervisor Maxman actually helped establish when he was with the fire, when he was the fire chief. But it's, it's kind of fascinating sitting in on those meetings and learning about the responses, the incident responses that we go to. But it's, provides resources that we probably wouldn't be able to all have if we were going alone on this. All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Jelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Item C, this is a resolution to authorize the chair to sign the fiscal year 25 County Substance Abuse Program Contract with Pathways Behavioral Services Incorporated for completion of work plan activities previously approved on June 25, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item A, or eight other businesses, this is item A, this is discussion, possible board action on the Waterloo Development Corporation's Court Works Project. All right, did you want to make any remarks today or presentation?
We can make some remarks.
Yes, please.
Sorry, I guess we probably should have said, kind of thought we'd be getting an update or presentation, so thank you.
Yeah, so Jim Miller here on behalf of Waterloo Development Corporation with a couple of our board members, Eric Johnson and Bob Peterson, and we're here today to request some financial support for the Waterloo Court Works Project. This financial support is imperative for us to be able to go after some state dollars and, you know, bring some state money into this community. So right now we're just short of $26 million in committed funding for the project. Our fundraising goal continues to be $35 million. We continue to work through a value engineering process to bring some of the costs down on the project, but still allow funders to donate or contribute over a period of seven or eight years to help with this project. This is a great project for our community. The, you know, economic impact is estimated to grow to just short of $16 million by year five. You know, along with that, the impact for kids in our community that right now don't have opportunities to get involved in these activities and the families that are being left behind by not having their kids in these activities, you know, this will be a great opportunity for kids in our community to get more involved and be more active. So happy to answer any questions that you all may have and would greatly appreciate your support on this project.
You said you're currently at 26?
Yes.
Goal of 35?
Yep.
As far as timeline, I know you've been before us, obviously before, and kind of mentioned this $1 million request, and is there some number you're trying to hit, I guess, before you take some different types of actions or?
Yeah, so, you know, our intention would be to apply for a CAT grant at the state level. They would require us to be 65% committed before we can apply, but typically the state likes to be the last dollars in, so we're past that threshold, but there's still about a $9 million gap from where we need to be. So our intention would be to go to the state as soon as we get to roughly 31, 32 million in commitments. You know, we would still like to break ground this winter with the foundations, so our timeline would really be to wrap up the fundraising campaign this fall, allowing us to start the construction in the winter.
I know in the initial presentation, there's a dialogue with the sports clubs.
Mm-hmm.
I can't remember, with the Boys and Girls Club, is there a dialogue with organizations like that?
We've not yet met with the Boys and Girls Club. We were just at the Leisure Services Commission this morning at 7:30 to update them on the project, a conversation around how we all work together, making sure we're building complementary assets and not competing assets, so. But yes, we would be willing to have a conversation with the Boys and Girls Club, as well as all sorts of other organizations in the community, in terms of how everybody can fit in this facility and utilize it.
I like how you put that, a complementary asset for the community and not a, I don't want to see competing, because we see that with our nonprofits at some level.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm always mindful of the complementary component of it.
I think as we got closer, we were talking to about how it meets the needs of our community. We knew how it brings guests in and obviously what it'll do for us as far as an economic impact is the services that you'll be providing with the, well, not tourism, but kind of tourism. But I just thought, and some of those details probably haven't been worked out, it's like as you go forward, that more of that'll come up.
Yes.
I'm just guessing.
Yeah, there'll be a lot more work, you know, right now our focus is on the fundraising piece. Construction's going to take roughly 18 months, once we get started, and during that time there'll be a lot of additional conversations, you know, Boys and Girls Club, transportation is an issue in the community, so working with other groups to make sure we can get kids to and from the facility. So there's going to be a lot of work. Once we get the fundraising done, we're really not done, we just move on to the next phase to make sure everything we're doing is successful moving forward.
Yeah, I really see the strong twofold benefit of bringing more folks into the community, but also making these activities more accessible to more families, because it's, it is a high, there is a big, there is a barrier. People drop a lot of money on sports and traveling around to tournaments. I'm glad it's something I don't have to do.
Yep.
Yes, you are.
Yeah. Mr. Dance Dad. But, yeah, but I, but I like the idea, I mean, I see, I see in my nieces like how much they drop and they're driving all around, you know, pretty large radius around Dubuque to participate in this stuff, and so I like that it's making it more accessible for the kids here in Blackhawk County.
And I appreciate that you come back. I was going to say, the presentations, I think, are always welcome as far as an update and seeing where you're at too, because we lose track of that, or I know I do, and see keeping up with it. Personally, I would say I'm not ready to support that request yet, just, and just for several reasons, but I said, we just are now, we're talking about getting into our strategic planning, and we're about a year behind where we wanted to be with that from the county's perspective. But I think one of the things I wanted to see us do, or hoped that we were going to do, was do some planning for our financing, and particularly our reserves and those dollars, and where we could allocate, or how best we wanted to do it and what projects and that type of thing. And this is, as you may or may not know, probably the second request for a million dollars that we've received, which is something very new to us, but that we've received in less than a year. And to me, I'd like to establish, see something, discussion at least too, of where we want our reserves to remain and how we want to spend that money and what projects, and if it is capital campaigns and that type of thing, maybe how much we can spend at that. So I don't know if that could push us to do this sooner than later, because there are projects out there waiting for us to make decisions, but that's my reluctance at doing it like today, if that was what your request was for us to move forward on the million dollars today.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I, you know, probably counters, as you might suspect, that we've had years to make those determinations. They've waited for a year, I think it was September-ish that they came to us. We've had time to get into those, and there's always an opportunity to have a conversation later, to make a decision later. I'm comfortable with the information that's been presented, given the economic impact, given the social impacts of community projects, or sorry, community engagement in the facility, especially during those non-tournament times, and frankly, the environmental impacts, right, turning an environmental, a site that was environmentally questionable, given its history, but turning an environmental potentially hazard to true economic development and meaningful economic impact of $16 million a year. The reason I've been supportive of these sorts of capital requests when they've come in front of us is when they've been able to articulate a financial and economic impact back into the community. And so, you know, I'm comfortable at the million dollars that's been requested here. I think we can continue to look to plan for the future while not holding proposals up in order for us to get, to develop a strategy. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion for a million dollars to approve, make the motion to approve a million dollars for the request from Waterloo Development Corporation's Court Works Project.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll just add that I see, when we look at the communities that are growing in Iowa, which is ultimately what I think, when I look at how we invest our reserves, I want to keep investing them in ways that I think is going to ultimately grow the tax base and grow the community here, because the communities that are growing in Iowa are the ones that are adding more and more amenities and making it a more attractive place to stay and live. I think this project is one of them.
Say, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I think it's important, since Waterloo Development's a private entity, at least that's my understanding, and I think this probably goes without saying, but I think we probably ought to have a funding agreement that identifies public purposes, the very least, just to make sure that this complies with the auditor's interpretation of what public funding is allowed and the fact that we can't just make donations.
Absolutely. All right, is there any other further discussion or questions?
I've got one question. Where is the million dollars going to come from?
It would be a million dollars from reserves.
Make that part of the motion, so the public's aware of that.
Certainly. All right, any further discussion or questions? This is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
As you know, I think the project's great, not to take away from the project at all, but I'm going to abstain for the same reasons. I think the county's infrastructure needs to be looked at first.
I'm sorry, what was your vote?
I'm sorry, abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Yes.
Little?
No.
Jelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we will move on to item B, this discussion, possible board action regarding the fiscal year 25 community service funding request. We asked to have another week on this, and so, because just to reflect kind of the accurate amount of the budget that we're working with.
And you mentioned the 250, that brought that to our
Yes.
That was like your 250 rather than 100, too.
Right.
And it looks like we're about
Do we need a, are we doing a recess?
I'm sorry, I can hear while I'm in there.
Okay. Well, we can too. Be some elevator music.
Well, I think when we talked earlier, it was like we were at the 115, right in that part, and then when you brought up the 250, and then I know we had a Cal Congress, so that added a 75, I guess, K, to that, I assume to this pool. So was your question maybe to give more to the group that's
Right.
applied, or to, you know, do it with something else? I didn't know, so.
Yeah, it was, I was initially, I wasn't thinking 75 for the Cal Congress out of this pool, but I'm open to that discussion. But so I was looking initially at adding more to these requests, but I'm also, I am open to the idea of opening it up for a second round as well, if that's, but if we do that, I don't want it to be something that we delay for too much longer, because it's, I mean, the, it almost feels like, I mean, budgeting will be here before we know it.
Yeah, definitely.
But I had come up with a couple numbers here, if we want to go through each of the columns, and this was again reflecting, not reflecting 75 coming out of it for Cal Congress.
Well, the reason I did that, it was because, number one, they had applied and been community funding requests, but also because we hadn't designated dollars for them anywhere else either, so.
Yep.
That was only my question.
Yeah, so if that's an adjustment we want to make, I'm, you know, we can certainly kind of figure that out. But yeah, for the 4H Fair, I had bumped that up to 10,000. Boys and Girls Club, I was suggesting 30,000. Books for Babies, we already had that at 2,500. House of Hope, I had put at 20,000. The Housing Project, at 15,000. Grow Cedar Valley at 30,000. Critical Home Repairs, from Habitat for Humanity, I put that one at their full 15,000, except that was a really good return on investment. Iowa Legal Aid, I had had at 17,000, and Little Knights at 20,000. Let's see, then I didn't put anything in with the Cal Congress, now I'm losing my screen here, okay. And there was 30,000 at the Food Bank, 10,000 for the PGC Outreach, 35,000 for Riverview Center, and 15,000 for World Grace Project, and that, that total is 249,500.
Now we removed Food Bank, I think, didn't we, though? We talked about that being removed from this last year.
Oh, we had, we had given them a specific line item in the budget.
But you were thinking
In my mind, I thought they would still be eligible to apply as we've had. In years past, I know that operation thresholds still applied, again, even though we've got, I think it's been a couple of years, but that's all up for discussion.
Yeah, I think, Linda, last, last week when we were trying to get around that $100,000 mark, I think that's where my initial recommendation was to, my initial position, I guess, was to not fund Food Bank, because we've already funded them throughout the budget, but after the reminder that we've, that we've actually allocated more.
But if this is the line item, you're thinking of utilizing still a line item, but with this?
Yes, yeah, this is, this is an addition.
In place, oh, in addition.
Yeah. Yeah. Are there any parts of that that really jump out?
Tried to go along, we follow along.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's...
Can you send us your proposal?
Yeah, let me, I don't have my county email on my phone, but I can probably send it from, let's see here.
I should have been taking notes, but, because I'm studying Tavis's spreadsheet.
Oh, yep.
That was for the hundred and fifty.
That was for one fifteen, yeah.
Chris, could you send that to me, too, please?
Yep.
That's at Abe at Blackhawk County. Iowa.gov, right? I mean, even, you know, at the two forty-nine five, if we were to take all of the seventy-five that we, that we committed last week to cattle congress, that would still put us under what we had budgeted with the hundred thousand plus the two fifty.
So actually, I looked at that, I think. The conversation was that the fifty for Food Bank was coming out of the hundred?
That was...
That was not the...
Maybe isn't where we ended up, but that is what is in there. I mean, the rest can, will just have to come from fund balance. I just...
All right, all right. I'm sorry, repeat that again.
Yeah.
Maybe I misunderstood what you just said.
Okay, so the conversation was that we talked about the hundred, we'd been doing a hundred. There was a proposal that we basically line item Food Bank, but that we would take that fifty away from the hundred, is what I took away at budget time. So if we want to do more, I'm, I'm, full disclosure, you're gonna have a little more out of fund balance. So...
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm like, so if we took them out and left them at their fifty line item, but not the thirty additional?
That would s- that's, we would still, we would then be at two nineteen five plus seventy-five, right, like, we're, we're still, we're still pulling out of fund balance at that point. Also, I, that is not, that's opposite of my recollection. I recalled that we maintained that it was fifty plus, or hundred thousand plus Food Bank's fifty. I don't recall us mixing, uh, uh, yeah. But I think, for, for future budget, I think, regardless, today, I think we can still make our, we're gonna have to come out of fund balance most likely for any of this anyways, but I do think for future budgets, it's important for us to articulate specifically, um...
So you mean this additional year, though, or you mean like we, what we designated was the hundred thousand, or, or now more two fifty, I guess, we said, that we were going to use for the community funding? But that was without the Food Bank in it? That was a separate line item, or that was part of the two fifty? So, no, it was part of the hundred.
So it was the hundred that was budgeted in community funds? And then, and we articulated additional two fifty out of fund balance?
Correct.
That we intended, you know?
Correct.
Less flexibility.
Yes, but I, but I think the fifty was to come out of the hundreds. Fifty for Food Bank was coming out of the pool of one hundred, so you had fifty left for the others. I mean, it's, it's fifty thousand dollars. You know, I just, I just wanted to be, provide clarity about that, because I did go back and research that. And that, that is what got in the budget, so we'll just, whatever you do today, we'll adjust through fund balance.
Yeah.
You know, the other ones that, that, um, I don't really know how to, how to eat this elephant, um, because there's a lot of, a lot of applicants here. Just a couple of things, I guess, m- my takes on, on a few items. I know there was maybe some, whether we should or shouldn't, or at what extent, um, with the LaPorte City Campus, uh, with the Learning Center. You know, they did, they did speak to, um, maybe a path forward with an existing structure. And so maybe that twenty, maybe we could pare that down if, if folks are, I don't know, if folks are trying to get to a lower number, um, or where we're at. But that might be one place that I, I'd be comfortable. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, with Chris's recommendations, to be quite honest.
I did try to email. I don't know if it came through, but I can, I can read the numbers off again, too.
I got it. I got it. I just said, I, I want to see it and study it.
So for, yeah. So for the Learning Center?
And hopefully I sent the right one and not the, the Tavis had.
I think you sent Tavis's.
Oh, goodness.
Could you read it again?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. All right, um, I had, let me get this. I should have brought my tablet. Okay. For the fair, I had it, uh, ten thousand. The Boys and Girls Club at thirty thousand. Cedar Valley United Way at twenty-five hundred. House of Hope at twenty thousand. Friends of the Family at fifteen thousand. Grow Cedar Valley at thirty thousand. Heartland Habitat for Humanity, uh, at fifteen thousand. And Iowa Legal Aid at seventeen thousand. Little Knights at twenty thousand. Then I didn't have anything in it for cattle congress. Food Bank at thirty. PGC Outreach at ten thousand. Riverview Center at thirty-five thousand. And World Grace Project at fifteen thousand.
That totaled two hundred and forty-nine five.
Yep.
What would it take to be the look to not utilize reserves? Just curious.
We'd only have, we'd, fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Because the way...
Fifty thousand plus fifty for Food Bank. So a hundred total, yeah, that's what it would be to not.
Although we, do we need to take? We don't need to take an additional action on Food Bank today. We've already, we've already allocated that fifty, correct?
You've budgeted for it. I mean, they, they need to bring a...
Yeah, but we don't need to make that part of, that fifty need to be a part of this.
I don't, no, not, not as long as you're sticking with that, right?
I can support this.
Here we go.
Budget, sorry.
I don't want to abstain on these, but I do really want to see us do a, some kind of planning before we, because we just keep biting into reserves, and maybe that's goo- okay, because like I said, we, if we have a plan for it, I just think we keep taking away and not doing that, so we need to...
Yeah, I do think us articulating a criteria, um, for these is, is important, um, but... You had said something, Dan, and sorry I didn't catch it.
I, I can support this, actually. I'll make a motion, and let's do something or nothing.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second? Any other further, uh, discussion or questions? All right. Hearing none, uh, this, uh, roll call, please. Mr. Veder. Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Uh, next, we go on to any reports or information from the board?
Yes. I would just like to, uh, recognize the passing of Leon Mosley. I mean, the man was, his voice characterized Leon. Before I met Leon, I met his voice. And he, I mean, he was involved in the community. He loved this community, whether he agreed with them or disagreed with them. He, uh, he was doing what he thought was right. And, uh, I mean, he was on this board for years. He had such an impact on this community.
I think sixteen years?
Sixteen. Always willing to get involved.
Yeah. Yes, and willing to speak his own thing, too.
Absolutely. Uh, our condolences go out to his family.
Uh, I just wanted, just a really quick shout out. Uh, hopefully other supervisors have noticed it. Lori, our, our admin aide, has been attaching this hyperlinked, our agendas. Uh, that does help, you know, reviewing twenty-eighty agreements and that sort of thing, so shout out to her. It, it's certainly additional work, but, um, I think it certainly helps make for a more efficient, uh, review of the agendas ahead of time, so.
I think she was just waiting probably to see how we like it or don't like it before we, yeah, move forward, so, yeah, I think that was great.
Yeah.
And I will just add, after getting back to Ted Garnett, and saying that we were considering the seven hour, but just finding the right day, he said, um, he would come in on the twenty-seventh for, uh, later in the morning, like, if he could get in that ten to eleven range of August, and just do a twenty minute with us, kind of catching up a little bit, and also going over where he'd like to be with that zero, phase zero, planned, planned. So, I thought that works for everybody. We'd do that, because I said, it might be that we like the four-hour sessions, but we just have to schedule a month to month or something, because we have such different schedules.
Yeah. A little bit of heads up on those would be helpful.
He said he does as well, because he like plans out six months, so whatever day, so, just a heads up. Okay, super.
All right, any other reports or information from the board? Now, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.